Let's pray, Lord, if you will, lead, guide, and direct us, Father. We pray for your wisdom in that time, and we pray for your strength. We pray, Father, for what we do here goes to your honor and your glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seventeen present, one out, out of forms. A minimum of minutes of previous meeting. Most of them spot Adams. We need to say, "Second by Randy Hady to approve the minutes of the last meeting." With metal out.
Randy Hady.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
First off.
Yes.
Brian Martin.
Yes.
Frankie.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Ryan Fox.
Yes.
Robert.
Ah.
Dr. Hill.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Brandon Moore.
Yes.
Arnold.
Here.
Richard Ginn. Billy Brown. Billy Martin.
Yes. Most of it's there. They make company with veteran service officer. Deal. Sir. Where are you all? This is the first time I've been in a podium after a few times. You've got to get that whole dang glass as well, see what I'm going to do down. Well, first off, I know you guys have a lot to do tonight, and I think this is quick as I can, but I've been a little off on preaching, so please bear with me. Get tired of having to come to shut up. Thank you for allowing me to be here and present what we're doing. Uh, what we've got going on, let's say now, our, what we're trying to do is get a veterans service officer, a county veterans service officer. Uh, I want to give y'all guys just a little bit of facts about what we thought about it, but right now, there's more veterans in the United States than we've had since the end of the war, too. That person who was eighteen years old, joined the military at the beginning of the first Gulf War, is now forty. I wonder if y'all thought about that, because they've been in war for twenty-two years. What I'm making of that is they're starting to get a little bit older, and people are starting to have some problems, medical problems, as they get older, it's not going to go away, and they need some help. What's happening is, uh, we're going, uh, some of these people who, you know, veterans that need some help from the VA one way or the other, they're having to go to, a lot of times to Nashville, or to Knoxville, Marcusboro, wherever. They'll go down there, and they'll meet with somebody, you know, fill out some paperwork, and they'll try to get some benefits that they're entitled to. And it gets kicked back to them, whether they're getting a nod out of somewhere, and they don't know why. Stuff gets kicked back, then they gotta go all the way back down there again, and do it again. And they don't get, you know, before, you know, they can't find out what's going on, what's wrong, and they don't get the paperwork filled out by one reason or another, so they give up. And they're not getting what they're supposed to be getting. And the other thing is, a lot of people just, well, don't know what they're on a howl to out there, and they're missing. And our goal here is to get the veterans in Jackson County, Clay County, you know, the help that they're all supposed to be getting. And this is something that has the potential to bring money back into town instead of just doing something to throw it out there. Uh, right now, uh, well, what we've done is neither one of our counties are large enough to justify having a county service officer full time. So what we're looking to do is two days in Jackson County, two days in Clay County. If we get together on this doggone thing, and we're, I mean, we're all, we're all here, we're all in this together, and if we put our heads together, I think we could do something here that would make a lot of difference for a lot of people. And, uh, I know everybody goes through all these things all the time, and you stand up there and say, "Hey, what a wonderful thing veterans have done, what a great thing they're doing." Uh, well, you know, we're trying to show them, uh, if they're just, you know, saying. What, what have gotten mine here? And I have folks, uh, coming down here, and you guys, uh, American Legion posts, and we've got a lot of here, my Mr. Harold Martin, uh, he's a veteran service officer. He, he knows a lot about, we also have a Doc Smith here, who's the state service officer right in this area. And several more people, uh, we're in, I mean, this is a good thing, it's a good thing for a lot of folks. And it's not a lot of money. Basically, the, here's the deal. Two days here, two days in Clay County, we're looking, the basis thing on, you know, four days a week, at, at ten dollars an hour. And that annual salary comes out being sixteen thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. And we look here, they're gonna have to do a little bit of training, they have to live in Nashville, or somewhere like that, four times a year. Three times, they go for one day, go down there and back, they pay their gas. Uh, one time a year, they go down, it's three days training, so it's gas down and back, plus two nights in motel somewhere. And there's some software they have to have. I'm also working with some local, uh, companies around the other that pretty much assured me that they could not help us out, get some office equipment, computer, printer, and that kind of stuff. But here's what we've done. Took this to the C Council in Salina, and I asked them for twenty-four hundred dollars to go in on this. And I got a hundred percent yes vote on it. Then I turned around, took it to Clay County Commissioners, and I asked them for seven thousand dollars. And again, and Brian can confirm all this, he's here with Brian Coon, who's our chairman of the board down there in Clay County. And again, about a hundred percent thumbs up on this, for seven thousand dollars. And what we're trying to do is get Jackson County to match that. Uh, I've also met the city mayor here, John Fox, and I voted their meeting, I voted for him. And I've asked them for twenty-four hundred dollars, and that's what I'm doing here tonight, to ask you off the seven thousand dollars. I understand money's tight, believe me, I live in Clay County, we've got no money either. You know, I mean, it's just tough. But the good thing is, my asking for that, I mean, not, not really, I mean, seven thousand dollars is still seven thousand dollars, but it potentially has to help people. And I'm not talking just about the veterans either here, we've got widows, and we've got children who are dependents of these people, that half things coming to them that you might get. And that's basically my folks, you guys, with everything. Uh, we, we've worked out, I mean, uh, with the help of the state, uh, we've got hiring process in mind. Uh, hopefully, more people from here, more people from Clay County, uh, veterans who set up, we have veterans, uh, at County Commissions. Uh, I don't, I don't know how many you have. But, uh, you know, if you've got two or four, but, uh, at least, at least a couple of them need to set up a hiring meeting, and they need to get together and interview people, uh, come up, you know, with the right person for this job. And to make this thing work, uh, I mean, the key is getting the right person in the job. Let's face it, four days a week, sixteen thousand dollars a year, they're not here for the money. You know, we've got to have somebody that's here that wanna help somebody, wanna help you money. And somebody who's caring, uh, knows a little bit about computers, they have to be a veteran. And if you don't have four people who know to, to make up that committee, then what we'd like to do is take some, some of the people, you know, from your local county here, uh, from a, an active veterans organization, which I think the only one we got is part of the most American Legion post. You might take a couple of those guys and make it, make yourself a force. Uh, and then, you know, pick out who they're gonna be, but you've got some great assets back here. You've got some people who've done it before, who know what's going on. Uh, anyway, when all this talk was out, uh, we're gonna have two thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars left over for travel expenses, and buy a computer program that they have to pay for every year, and that will tie them directly in for the state. So if you're a veteran and you go to the service officer and talk to them, well, they can get right in there now, hook this stuff straight to the state, and get it turned in without you having to drive and go anywhere. And we know, you know, we've got one or two veterans left, and we've got sixteen left in line in Clay County. You know, we've thought about that, you know, those guys being, still being around, but then I don't know how many you have here, but I'm sure there's still, probably more drills. You know, they can't, they don't get to drive, you know, two hundred miles, drill and stuff. We'll get a little bit kind of in. The last thing, according to the state, they keep up, not much money's coming in, they use county every year, uh, you know, through the VA. That doesn't count the disabled American veterans, or, uh, BFWs and stuff out there, and stuff other programs, it's strictly through the VA. And, uh, if you look at Clay County, if you look at Jackson County, the amount that's coming in to our county, it's per veteran, it's about half of what it is in over the county. And you know what the difference is? They have a county veteran service officer, we don't. You look at the Putton County, it's the same way. You start going around these doggone counties, look at them, it's obvious who has a veteran officer in the county, we don't. So that's what I'm saying, we've got the potential. Uh, don't know how much is coming in Jackson County annually, maybe a half? Do you hear the second? Uh, there's, there's. New Jackson County? Yes. The last year was one point five million of veterans in Jackson County. So right now, the VA is sinking one and a half million dollars into Jackson County to your veterans right now. Now, I can guarantee those though, I just, I did what, I just, I guarantee this call, no, uh, we'll get people used to this. Both need, I, I don't know your office bases and stuff down here, but they just need a place to work out, that's pretty much it. So, uh, that's, that's, that's about all I have, that's it in the nutshell. What I'm asking for, basically, is for your support, uh, a motion or a resolution, however y'all do it, uh, to support this call, seven thousand dollars. The ball's in your court, we can't do it wrong. So we're either gonna sink or swim together, uh, both Clay County, if, if that's something. The state will not allow somebody to work two days a week, or, or, they're not allowed, they don't want that at all. The problem is, the policy, they don't work enough, they either gain proficiency, or the state proficient in that job, because it, it's hard, they gotta learn a lot of paperwork, uh, computer programs, and, and all the veteran programs. So the state up on all that stuff, they need to do it on a regular basis, two days a week is just not enough to be good at. So that's where we are. There, if you guys, anybody else have any questions, and I hope I find my people in the audience and answer pretty much anything you've got to go.
Anybody have any questions? I made the motion, we're here to serve the House.
I said it.
Committee motion, Carl made the motion. Second by Brandon. Okay, now, you made the motion and seconded. We're, we ain't got a budget passed yet, so I understand that, uh, uh, so, uh, but I do like that, I do appreciate you guys' time, and, you know, we're just hoping for some support, and, uh, maybe we can work that out. We didn't vote on this committee, we need to take it second. What committee? Forward. We didn't get it, though. But I got the motion to second first, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna draw my motion. Did it go to the committee? What do you?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, you made a motion, sent to the committee. Billy Myers made the motion, Diane seconded, sent to the committee, or, or, or. Okay, now, Paul Rowe.
Randy Hady.
Yes.
Jackson.
Ah.
First off.
Brian Martin.
Yes.
Frankie.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Ryan Fox.
Yes.
Robert.
Ah.
Dr. Hill.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
Brandon Moore.
Yes.
Arnold.
Yes.
Richard Ginn.
Yes.
Billy Brown.
Yes.
Billy Martin.
Yes.
Tracy.
Okay. Okay, carry that, so we'll work on that. Yeah. All right, thank you, thank you, good job.
Guys, I've got a couple resolutions I want to drag in last for, one concerning inmates, one concerning others. Our colleagues, uh, we're requesting a review on the budget this year, to have, uh, that kind of trip, um, that type of policy in late, this lap law. The first one is, uh, I'm already pleased, our, so the, uh, resolution of the law establishes a plan authorized and shared as a candidate for inmates, given the general fee for items, services, and hygiene issued to inmates upon each individual. Whereas the Jackson County Sheriff's Department, Brooks leases houses, Jackson County inmates, other county inmates, inmates, and citizens, require necessary items, services, and hygiene issued to inmates provided. This place in the G D N O's collecting capacity is divided, and forced by the red office, called the local district, and facilities, and funeral homes, upon the death of major family members, providing all the provision. These are things we do, anyway. Whereas in courts, the state of Tennessee, code forty-one, code one forty-two, the Jackson County Sheriff's Department charges inmates, are necessary issued items, services, and escorts. Jackson County Sheriff will not deny necessary items, hygiene, services, or escorts, or best provide, place solely, inmates, and individuals, place fee, with cost. Now, now therefore, it resolves, the Jackson County Sheriff's Department charges, and collects inmates' trust, funds, and capital for necessary items, services, hygiene, and escorts, following standard of county procedures. And what this means is, you have inmates that declare their id, identity, which means they have no money to pay, but they declare that, and then they say, you know, they got two of their own compister camp, they're buying two of their own, and they're, and we're buying them their shanks, with their salt, and breakers, and their necessary, and far out. It's gonna allow us to sit forth to feed, be able to take that from their compister camp, instead of us giving them those, and then buying all of them through the office. They said, we'll implement a plan to charge the fine inmates for necessary items, and hygiene, not to exceed actual cost, and the normal fee of five dollars set forth by the county commission for escorts. Um, the five dollars, that doesn't, we don't, that very, very rare happens, if you think of somebody for some of those escorts. If I were in jail, and my, my father passed away, I wouldn't be able to go through. It's just, it's something we've done, some people like that, and rare coming here, and they're very nice, but they're stupid and dangerous, so I'm just, I'm taxing them, I'm very, very low cost for that, and I'm just going along with the actual costs of other stuff, but if you just apply that, that's the first great question. I wish you guys.
Motion of Billy Myers, second by Jonathan Doge. If they have any questions.
I didn't, didn't leave like, well, like, are they gonna pay the kids, they have to go two days? This is gonna be a clear on that.
Okay, better.
Okay. Because I know that it's been a strange time, two days, and I have to do it in one day, so I think they consider it.
And for the water. Because, you know, which. Obviously, if at all, you know, it's impossible.
Let's see. Yeah, like, this great collection, another different scale, that's a good service.
Yeah, well, we should have to give the supplies, the service, uh, service taken from homes, you know, which they don't have to, yes, I probably would have got.
Well, yeah, it's been, this, this lady, I know, I, I hope the water, this money, is, so if you waste it, you may not find out, I could find out when you give that dog money in that town, or I could get out of bed for that money. You know.
Well, I guess there's something else to do.
Because poor one, I'll come begging to them to get their money. And if they don't, then maybe we can warn that maybe from them by talking.
Okay, Morgan and Billy Meyer, section of John and George, uh, roll.
Yes.
Randy Hattie.
Yes.
Jack Smith. First officer.
Yes.
I am one.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Kyle Allen.
Yes.
Harry Paul. Will and my brother. Tom and Joe.
Yes.
Barry and.
Yes.
Brendan Moore.
Yes.
Kyle Allen.
Yes.
Richard Higginson.
Yes.
Buddy Brown.
Yes.
There's none.
Yes.
Chris Smith.
Yes.
Uh, second one. This resolution is put off the status to implement a plan authorized to share tax can to charge individual with particular income tax can anytime long. See associated with which is said in the. Whereas Jackson County Sheriff's Department authorized to be associated with the red traffic violation center upon doing so, setting it let me tell the Jackson County Sheriff's Department time law. Jackson County Sheriff's Department, permanent office associated with twenty four minutes of responsibility, which were already. Um, and of course, within the code, eight twenty one thousand two, Jackson County Sheriff's Department is being associated with only administration costs that are incurred. We can't charge more than our, and we can't just because we, if it costs us thirty five dollars for these extra administrative costs, just because we won't make a hundred dollars, we can't charge more. We can't charge more than that to cost each other. And so that line's all that's left on that. Uh, now they've resolved that's been shared with the last charge individual to collect fees for point administration costs. Jackson County Sheriff's Department linked in a plan that charge individuals to pay ten dollars, which we are doing ten dollars today, and we started doing the thirty five dollar flat fee for administrative costs. It's because paperwork from beginning to end, receiving money, receipt, having to pull some money off the road, so it will get the car back, and back to finish all that up. What this will do ultimately is offset some of the costs for the ones we don't receive the money for, for getting paid for it to get paid. And I think that'll kind of help with that. Although you got that, we want to show, uh, I think you said about the dollars and everything, but it's kind of all that stuff, so we can have this to back all that up. Can you charge the fee back for, you know, everybody that's all that done and gets, uh, out? That'll, that'll kind of cover, that's kind of covering the bad, it'll be, he won't get it until they can get it out. Most people come to get stuff out, but they'll probably want stuff out then when they're big with police, they got personal loans that are. Somebody comes to get their child's car, so you know, I'm not going to tell them anything, so we'll come to get it. You know, reasonable stuff, stuff that's attached to fixing the collar, and you don't take stuff out off, but you know, sometimes you have to get, when somebody comes by, I'm just gonna get some of that. So that's what I'm covering some of. I don't want to overshoot it because I don't want to charge somebody more than we should. But it may be clear, it may be particular, that was going to be. Right now, uh, we got your two, they're on our schedule. We got this done, then probably next meeting. For the four next week, I'll probably have something else to look over. Or probably the general office up front, you know, right now we've got Tommy Ward, Junior, I miss the office probably three times.
But they, they all have charges same, right, so. Shouldn't that be done?
I don't know if it's legal to make a charge surprise.
Let it be, that's okay.
Uh, that's what we're, we've been, we've talked about already, making, we don't know if we can spit it on them. We'll try to do that, and we get that committed, that service, that contract. If you get somebody, if you, if you bid it out, the only negative I'll say that you bid it down to. Great service, eight years, needs on vacation, go somewhere, and then we have to cost somebody the same way you have to be, and charge it seven dollars for a car. Because they don't have, have to be. You see, I'm still researching, looking at it. But if we, if they, on rotation, I'll, I'll just hope that they come and do that. And that's something we cover a part of the stuff I send you guys and put together with the, with your department.
Okay, good, you're in the loop.
Thank you.
I was saying, Jerry Smith.
Okay.
Second was Scott Adams. Through the toll and related issues. Do they have any more questions? All will.
Randy Hattie.
Yes.
Jack Smith.
Hi.
First officer. I am one. Thank you.
Yes.
Kyle Allen.
Yes.
Harry Paul.
Yes.
Will and my brother.
Hi.
Tom and Joe.
Yes.
Barry and. Brendan Moore.
Yes.
Kyle Allen.
Yes.
Richard Higginson.
Yes.
Buddy Brown.
Yes.
Billy Brown.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anything, most of you did. Two thousand twelve thirteen county clerk. Library. There. But one needs to work out after the year of, you know, play on the first team. There's a, kind of year of fun, and then dollar forty one cents. Size legs to the twenty nine cents, but they have, but it's worth, how they, so we, we let it dance, and therefore, two, it'll be a dollar two cents on, you know, big service to the two cents. To make the total of two dollar ninety five cents. And, uh, Roger, he, he's worked with us air after air of trying to come up with these things, but you're playing. For reading, or even for, whatever, whatever, yeah, that's fair.
Uh, good evening, to those that don't know me, I'm Ben Rogers, I work for University of Tennessee's County Technical Assistance Service. Uh, back in August, Finney and John had called me to start the budget process for Jackson County. And I worked a little bit of audit on the front handles and things, and I wasn't quite familiar with what had been happening the last couple of years. I gave, I handed out to you, basically, it's a summary. The last seven years, it kind of were revenue expenditures that come into the county. Uh, the bottom line under fund balance, June thirtieth of each year, the UCs kind of went up and down, fluctuated. The hardest hit, of course, I think, was probably fiscal year two thousand eleven, um, where the expenditures kind of exceeded revenue by a million bucks at least. That kind of puts you in a deficit fund balance, and that's where that audit funding came last year. So this year, this past fiscal year two thousand twelve, reasonably stable in the budget, but you had some cash flow problems stemming from a couple of things. One of those was ambulance service charges hadn't been collected, uh, at kind of the time of the matter for various reasons. It was probably looking at three hundred thousand dollars that didn't come in two thousand twelve. Um, and then, uh, we had money for prisoner boarding for the sheriff, for the house's inmates that were disappropriated to the debt service, the general fund, you look at seven hundred some thousand dollars. Now, backing up to August and December two thousand eleven, the county went and borrowed an intermodal loan for debt service to make payroll and other operating expenses to get through roughly December two thousand eleven. Because you know your tax money don't start coming in really well until December and January and February. So that's, that's something that's common in my area, is that as you get a rural county, you have to borrow money to get through payroll and expenditures. The problem was paying that back, that six hundred fifty thousand dollars back by June thirtieth, is you didn't get your ambulance service charge, and you didn't, you hadn't disappropriated revenue to debt service. And that's, that's been taken care of now, ambulance charges have come in, some of them have hundred fifty nine thousand, but that goes towards this year that you're in. So you had, we were not able, one, to pay the money back, six hundred fifty thousand dollars by June thirtieth, by comptroller requested, two, you have, you have a cash shortage right now, uh, is the problem. So to tell you all this to get to that, the comptroller is aware that the loan was not paid back from six fifty back to debt service, I've been talking with him for several weeks. Made a lot of progress last week, um, spoke to Bron Queen, who works for the comptroller, and he, he's going to make the, the county general fund pay back to debt service fund, but he's probably not going to shoot and make it happen this year. We've worked out maybe a plan over five years to pay that back, we're looking at about a hundred thirty thousand dollar payment every year to debt service with general fund. That's not set in stone, but that's tendably the way they're going, but there are some parameters with that. Um, with that to happen, and some of that's going to be outlined in a letter he sent back to the mayor's office. I can't speak exactly what they're going to say, except for they're going to look at the progression of the county's revenue going forward. And what I mean by that is, is there, is the revenue going to come in to help pay off that hundred thirty thousand dollar payment every year to reach your six hundred fifty thousand dollars? Uh, if, if there's nothing done, I can't speak for what exactly the comptroller's office will do, but as my experience in the past, the comptroller's office will do whatever they want to do. So if they don't see the county progressing to make that effort paying back the six fifty, they may come in and advise you and tell you what you need to do. Um, they're probably going to set parameters on going forward with your training, they want you to start looking at budget classes to attend, uh, debt management. And when you talk about your debt service, it was really healthy at one time, it's getting lower now, but, because that's six hundred fifty thousand dollars just gone to debt service, so it's general. But the one thing you gotta pay attention to going forward also is when the audit comes out and they have adjustments and findings, that could possibly hurt your credit rating, which Mr. Barlow and I worked a couple of years ago to get this county rated. Y'all do not have a credit rating, and what that means is, if you have no rating, you're going to get the highest interest rate possible, you go to find the bar. If you do have a credit rating, you're going to get the better rating, the lower interest rates you're going to have. So I think the county's got an A B rating roughly, so that lowered the interest payment on all your debt, the jail, the schools, every debt you pass out, that reduces the cost of the county. But when you have audit findings, that rating can go back up because the, the people in New York are looking at that, because they have your bonds, and they want to make sure you're going to be able to pay it back. So if, if there's nothing done, there's audit findings that are, are issued at the end of this fiscal year, or this past fiscal year, which August not done yet. Uh, it could hurt your chances on your interest rate for your, for your debt, and that's something that would probably hurt the schools more than anybody, since he has more debt. And none of this is really, I mean, this has nothing to do with schools. The problem in the general fund and debt service is where, is completely irrelevant to schools, because he, he carries us on debt, and he has to operate. So I'm saying that the ten cents in the general fund increase is going to go to strictly paying that six hundred fifty thousand dollars off back to debt service. So you're, you're basically, you borrowed from one fund, you couldn't pay it back, and now you're going to pay it back. Yes, sir.
I believe that we owe the general fund for that expiration on the fifth month. I felt that thing, you know, that we, you know, we not had that three months.
Yeah, and what.
And that's three, I believe, I would not have it if I thought that, that what that was going to be in the whole fiscal year.
Yeah, you're looking, I think, will taxes drop to thirty thousand dollars a month in revenue, and it didn't start, which you buy. So that had no bearing on fiscal year two thousand twelve, and that's just the way the law set for, the state law set for the little taxes, nothing anybody can change about it.
But I think, I think they're all getting more debt, and yes, that's true, or something, but we're going to get that, it's going to be up here.
And it, it helps, and it's going to help, and there's one thing I want to remember, I want to mention to you, because I don't want to leave anything that's undisclosed, is the ambulance service, I know, is working hard to get those charges back into the county. Uh, but we, we're, and this budget's not, the full three hundred thousand or whatever the excess was, it's not reflected in the budget, because you haven't collected all of it. So I'm not in belief to show something that's not been collected yet. I think hundred fifty nine has turned in so far, which we reflected that in per, just fiscal year thirteen budget. But, uh, you're still going to be, you have a balanced budget, you actually have an excess of revenue, excess of fund balance coming in after the budget's been passed, it passes. But it's got, that's involved a ten cent increase, plus the little taxes can pass, plus some ambulance service coming in. Uh, is the ten cents enough for one year? Yes, it is. But you gotta make sure going forward that you save in your budget and address the remaining five hundred twenty thousand dollars you owe debt service. Um, I beg and plead, and maybe so they can forgive it from the comptroller's office, they're not in the business of forgiving, so, yes, sir.
Nobody here, I guess, was here around the sixties, you asked, oh, two, or something like that, well, do you want, well, I wouldn't hear it, well, we got ready, but I couldn't, I would know. There, of course, that came into your face. And he's scared, it's today I'm going to be down there.
And I, and I can't honestly say what their rate would be, but I do know that it won't be just enough to get by. They, they will probably, um, look at the situation closely, and the rate they will give you or suggest, or even pass for you, would be more than what you need for the next five years.
But it's not going to be for one year, but then they're going to check.
You're exactly right. But, and, and I want to reiterate the, the fact that the money not coming in fiscal year two thousand twelve before June thirtieth was a reason that paying it was not paid. The cash wasn't there to make the payment, and so you can't pay something that you don't have.
Anybody have any questions? Ben's been here several days, he's worked long days, waiting in the afternoon after he helps you get this budget prepared. He's put off his goblin trip from today, he was going on a goblin trip, so he put it off today, so he can go tomorrow, so he can be here at night.
Just a hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars to talk back to back, he's loaded.
That's, that's from the ambulance partnership, sir. And this thing, man, hurt the nine, that this is coming as a whole, uh, who is sixty nine? Okay. So you can add that extra.
That is not going to reflect those thirty dollars, so we're not flooding them here between there, you play the election, have them have a good office, and that's, I was just saying, about a dollar. Unless we have another flood, we shouldn't have, that should be recovered at expense, and I'd rather not up.
You're hoping one.
Well, I think, that's, that's, I think, should, that, we, we.
Right now, Larry, the flood in those counties, I paid, I paid our way for this call.
Yeah, if you didn't pay the brick, then we had to pay the rest of the.
Well, yeah.
On, on.
The road, yeah, the, the creek, the bridge, uh, all did pay for it, and then R C S, but everything else, we got it covered, I think, yeah.
We paid our campus rent for N R C S, to make your point.
Yeah, but, yeah, through that, the road part, you have the flood, it picked up at the beginning, it could be very well the same thing in R C S, yeah.
Yeah, that's fair, that'd be true, actually, it's managed, you say, but. You can be a water, you're close. Yeah. What's that go?
I, I pulled the numbers from the audits, I, I had Doug in two thousand one, eight two, I got that, those numbers from the audit, it was, I mean, it's somebody on the commission, they won't speak, man. I'm glad to answer, answer the questions, not on the sit down, what y'all perceive. Anybody have any questions for Steve?
Larry, right, though, we get another flood, you'll pay more than previous one out than previous, and you know, you're like Max, you get.
We could have a tour, please.
Anybody got any questions?
I said again, Ben, he's done a lot of work, he's done a lot of talking to the comptrollers, we worked out a deal of where we can get this on a payment plan instead of having. The tribe comes up with a six hundred fifty thousand dollar in one year, and that would be just after, they just, we're taxpayers, and things. He, he's worked hard to get this set up through the compter. Now, to this, to pay.
Well, it needs to be up to that we're paying ourselves back.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's, it's paying our debt service back.
Yeah.
We borrowed money out, we borrowed money from ourselves to operate on, and then have it come out, to break it back and pay it back in the debt service, which is.
And get that far in the hole, will it, what, what cost, get that far in the hole, we get the bars, we play the policy.
Well, it, it runs like that about every year, is we got, at the end of the year, before taxes start coming in, we'll have to borrow money to operate on until taxes are collected. And all the years passed, if, uh, they've sent enough money to come in that, that we could pay this back. But this year, we know the short follow, the ambulance service and all that other stuff, that, that we never did accumulate enough money to pay debt service back. So that's what, now that's what it is.
Right, I have a sort of three hundred thousand dollars in all of that, proof, what about the other three hundred fifty thousand?
Roughly three fifty, what, the sheriff knows better than I do. The sheriff brings in over a million dollars through the board, where he houses state prisoners every year, and three fifty or so is set aside to debt service to pay for the jail. But the remainder of that should go to general fund. Well, it did not, it wasn't to debt service, so, well, some of it. So you look at three fifty, four hundred thousand right there, that went to debt service instead. And the comptroller has allowed the county to move that, but it wasn't moved until recently, after the deadline to pay back the loan to debt service. So if that money would have been there, and the ambulance services, it would have been possible to pay that six fifty back, but you're still back at status quo, where you're almost at zero, your debt service fund balance is still an issue. The money, the, that's like I said, this is a common thing, and, and the commissioner spoke, and a lot of my counties every year borrow this money to get through from July to October, except for December, but the money comes in, so I pay it right back to you.
I can, I can speak a little bit on that, it's electronically positive to stay. The first two hundred and ninety thousand or so place a jail fine, uh, the rest of that three fifty goes to debt service to pay for the cars we got last year. Then after that, the rest of it's all supposed to go in the general fund. And then it was just a mix up, I guess, I don't know, it's electronically transferred, I guess it just got mixed up, and instead of, once that three fifty was made, it all went into debt service, where the revenue expectation last year is six hundred seventy thousand, the general fund. And four hundred and ninety seven thousand didn't go to general service for the, the general fund was supposed to, it just kept going into, into debt service. And it wasn't caught till, till later on, and it just got, I think, the four hundred something, four ninety one, something like that. But we, we actually brought in about a million, a million hundred people thousand last year. But once they got this, that would be, that's a good chunk, I guess, and that was, you know, what's seventy eight, ninety thousand every month, and you start missing dollars, and that's, that was a part of the shortfall on the front, and that's going to be put back in there.
And on balance, just paying sure that, balance, just on balance, and then run out on that. I saw her, that was fair, she only had her first one, they were like, really?
What's put in place now to stop to see that these funds aren't put in the wrong areas, for all the short, you know, working with Ben and Tim, with the auditor, and Vernon, and.
Let, let me say something about that, you didn't put it on. I used to put it in county general, that, in your C D, and I used to go to county general all the time. And about three years ago, I was told to put open in the debt service. And who offered out of that, I don't know, but that's where I was told to put it, and that's where I've been put for about the last three years. Well, you know who told you that? Uh, yeah, I was told, I was told, it wasn't none of these guys, but I don't know if anyone told you, don't it, or not, but I was told that's where they put it.
What happened to the three hundred thousand E M S?
We're, we're collecting it, he's collecting it right now, he's collecting some, he's collecting some money. I didn't think those things were going to make, before that, I can't.
You're a parent, if you know.
Yeah, but, uh, uh, like the contract, Medicare, it hadn't been filled out, so we wanted to get you that. Uh, Medicare, if it was an issue, the back work on it, we just, it wasn't available, a lot of it, we had, uh, some information, I resisted, and it didn't, it didn't, it wasn't seen. You know, everything's on time, that time, Gary, you know, you only got so long to send it, and did it, so a lot of that, that's a lot of office. It's in the door, and they send it back to them, out of baby.
Does Medicare still allow a year of power?
A year, yeah, yeah.
Why wasn't?
They thought we were going back, so that's when we got, like he said, the hundred fifty nine thousand. Uh, it took a couple of months, and it, it didn't get in the shape overnight, so, you know, it takes a little while to get it ready back up. Uh, I could say, maybe seven people, I saw it, and this was August, before we started getting, we had a hundred fifty nine thousand in August, so.
My next question, I'm going to say the trial over.
Did you have to write off, uh, they used, Medicare used, uh, the insurance for that twenty five years, but Medicare used to allow you to file a claim, but they would penalize you of proceeding and still pay. Are they not?
Years, obviously, why, they're trying to come up with, they're, I'm, I'm, they, uh, over that, over a year. We probably go back a little bit, many, whenever I cut the bag, think that's what nobody's doing that way, I don't know. Yeah, they fixed that one, you got a good addition. I don't think they fixed that one like that. And, and what we were saying there about borrowing money. I've been there twenty six years, and, well, that's not been many years, what they get to borrow money from debt service, pay it back before the end of the year, I say, I'll take the one wire, that, that's happened, that, that has been, that's been there.
Yeah, because they're the period, and they ain't nothing come in.
Yeah.
Kind of like Eric, who lives off tax, tax collection, that's probably tax. And that, yeah, you would have done through October, that too, and March, probably, and all of this paper.
I, I played the county's money back, they got low one time, I guess, Frank Williams, the county's, they just want to have to go to the bank, borrow some money, and I asked him, why, you want to borrow from debt service? And pay them back, and they checked with comptroller, and they told that to fine on their, back to the end of the year, and that's what they're doing every year, saying, when they need to.
But a lot of that money, and then Barney, you don't need to worry about, I mean, you know, they, they just said that, like, unless you ask your money, you know, you have to call us to go, or something, to find out where it goes. It just, they tell us what the legislature did, but if you don't have food, or without.
I know where I was told to, C D money and, spread the money, I know I was told for this, any day, and bring it down.
But, uh, I mean, like, come to us, or, I mean, you don't, it don't, I think, it's easy to figure out, it's not figured out, you know, we'll, we'll call us, and we'll play, we'll, 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 we'll.
They come from the state, they come from the state, they come from U S C A, big amount of dollars, don't think.
Hey, you don't, you don't, oh, you got to figure out where it comes from, you know, you don't watch the salt.
I can't find out what the car, put it in the general.
You know, Vernon's doing about calling us, and so, if you send a party request in for fifty thousand dollars, we always hope for, so, hopefully, you send one in. Because, I mean, you know, air markets, nothing, maybe nothing, you just got to try to figure out where it comes from.
It, it ain't, it's unreal how it does.
Let's go ahead, go.
Who can, who can find out where it comes from?
Uh.
Who can, who can find out where it comes from?
That's Vernon, he, he.
Oh, they, you can't find out if they don't have any information, like, the state's got a phone number, but U S C A doesn't have one. You'll be, you'll have another guy.
Who, God, they didn't do that.
It's, I guess, I, I don't know. He calls us, you know, we send a party request in, we know what it is, and that's what the amount of money is, but we know it's not, we ain't sent one in. That they, they bomb to something. It's how it is, I'm.
On the county general. On the county general.
I got, I got one thing to say with the county general. Uh, no matter what you mean, Mr. Lashley. I asked you guys to combine your chief deputy salary along with the deputy salary. Two thousand four. Sheriff's department had eleven deputies to use to do insurance. Because of the money we've been running on the last few years, right now we've got nine. Consistently got the same nine decades I had and took out four and up till I guess probably two thousand eight or nine. You guys allow me to combine those numbers. And we got twelve thousand dollars from them to go to the public safety. Allow me to put that in deputy salary line. All, all I'm grateful this year is ten and one, eleven, still one less than we got. That's the only change I'm questioning making on part of my budget. That will inspire in the year, uh, getting above the improvement. Then later we hire a little thing and hopefully get by Barney and national tax and the public safety. As long as that's the change, I'm avoiding them in my life and buying most of mine. You can't afford right now because it's not for you, but I mean, it's just a bit of work. We got twelve thousand dollars from them and allow them to use that in our deputy salary line, but part of that was just a salary. And that's, I'm avoiding that, so at least some people can have one more decade in their life, you know, they'll pay. So if they don't, we'll add it to that. Just, I, I should get that.
Okay.
Yes.
Would you get this money before, or is this the first time you get this?
We've been getting, we get part, we get, this year we're getting eighteen thousand for the whole two thousand and four. We're getting, all right, it's always second exact, it's more than one thousand dollars this year, you know, we get.
So if all of them, if you're getting down to bottom, cool, uh, is this, uh, if we don't cost? We don't get that where it's at.
Uh, we've got, we've got, we've already received it, but next, next time the bus minutes will be there to put that up, we'll have that now. We've already received it, it's already internally. There was a lot of using that, and that's, uh, that's what we're buying.
No, we're just not going to take this, but we got...
None. And if we be, the chief deputy would not be on the property too thick, but they might get the same as everybody else, they just don't get it, they don't pay it on purpose. And they would allow us to ask that to happen, another officer. As approved for ten, one last year, and all of the four was nine, one was like a hundred and ten, and that would be once that bolted, we're going to have two thousand and four.
What's the difference, what you, what they spent for two thousand and four, what you spent last year?
Whatever the county court approved and they get a raise and they had the holidays and like tax time and all of that, whatever that is. But I don't have, I don't have, they deserve office, they're not making taxes. Yeah, we have comp time, everything, you'll see, we'll play that. That's all the time.
If it was for, for the county general, a dollar forty more. And a motion.
You going to go with the money, Ken?
Yes.
Well, I'm, I'm actually looking for them. They're all getting them.
Yeah, I had, they, they need to go on the money, not go off them.
Yeah, he said go, go off them.
Anything closer to passing, if someone considers moving around or what everybody's thinking, you don't matter.
A motion for two eighty five. Got a motion to Diane Martin.
Okay. That's that. Maybe you can motion, you can motion.
Diane made a name, you second?
Yeah.
Billy Swire?
Have this one as you all?
Yes. I want one to say it. Got a motion on Diane Martin, second for Billy Murray. For the whole, Colorado. Yes.
Ready, yes?
Yes.
Next hit.
Uh.
First option. Diane Martin, yes, can he?
No.
Uh...
Yes.
All right, go.
No.
So, remember?
Uh.
Oh, we go. All right, hang?
Yes.
All right, you want?
No.
All right.
No.
You should be.
No.
Wait, Graham? Lamar?
Yes.
Person?
No. And no mistake is.
No, it's a fact.
You have to sign the title, I mean, pay it.
They, they, I, they write that for us, we have to do that. While we love it. I explained to them that it was part of us. That there would be a prompt tax decrease because of that. And I said, it could have not, I wouldn't work for you, and that's why I'm telling you. They were talking, please don't take this answer. Then we just knocked it off a long ago, raised property taxes, and then we turned around and we got a wheel tax too. And we're trying to raise taxes again. That's, that's kind of absurd, we're, you got this wheel tax coming in now, they'll pay for what they're speaking. But I can tell you that on my...
Yeah. We let the state come in and, and they put about sixty five cents tax on there.
Well, it's trying to cut back a little bit, well, there's too much money being stranded, there was actually going on there.
I know it was shit, but they also, they don't even buy it. I'm a taxpayer, but we got to offer it to the county, we're going to have churches, we got to pay for it.
What kind of extra service would we give you if they didn't pass?
We just survive what we got.
Well, you can survive a quick bit at night. And you want, you want the tax card to keep sliding by?
We don't, we don't have that back on the first and next month, they'll just go, they'll bring it off.
Um, you fixing to get my sixty four fifty from a wheel back here? This month?
I have one question I want to ask the audience in here. Everybody that comes in here and complains, is that what they're feeling and do? How many of y'all save your money in this county? How many buy gas in this county? How many buy all your groceries in this county?
One, two.
Okay. So everybody who does that, then that will help our county. Now, we have people in our county that I see at Walmart, that, Brent Street Market.
It's called Wayback Walmart.
Well, it wasn't, we got our own.
I, 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 I tell you, we have, we have to do that, we have to play a lot, I can think of this advocate. Go for food back or go to the street market and go play. And that's all I got, so.
Come on, just play a black man like you're...
Beer, what is? Beer back down, come down, yeah.
Glad the way it had a reserve, I didn't spend all of the reserves last year and then that whole two. We had to do anything on campus where you don't have problems with. We had problems with the truck. It was over spent to be installing mounts or making the power on the truck. So, some of the children go out and earn on cheap.
What about the cars, whether it's one hundred seventy-three last year or three hundred forty-three?
Exactly. But I still, I budgeted which is what you think in my policy. And any major thing above that, you know, this is what I'm gonna do. And so, and by the way, I think the comptroller said we had to have a reserve on that too. This, this will, it'd be much a little bit lower today. Where are the rest of the reserves on that?
It's time to get my, so they can know what you know. What I thought would take, take two months. I'll say, I created by, by the way, I know it's like six, eight, ten, four, they would, it's not more than that. Yeah. What do you got? Every guy. Locks on the dirt, I think, right, right. Weeks, every day. What part of this extra money that you're asking for, would go toward getting us just what the collective last, oh, oh, last, last, uh?
It was fifteen, two thirty-seven last year. They went down fourteen, nine fourteen, and the year before that it was sixteen.
That's a lot of sixteen.
Sixteen, thirty-three, thirty, thirty, sixteen, three, 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 and it went down two thousand dollars over the last three years of value of the key. So, you have to burn up those you brought in.
There's not, I mean, more jobs than you have. Yeah, the prospect of nobody else. That would be much easier. That would be certain. What about, uh, this would be certain, what about? Well, I mean, you just said, now that that, well, you did some tax rate, you lost, you lost, right, right? It's been down a number of years. There you go, one last year, well, two thousand dollars on the key, what you budget, two, two, two dollars a month?
Eighty-five.
You multiply that, you, you're about to ask me a dollar right there. You know, where they be? Well, that was, that's so much that actually makes me afraid. It's, 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 it's actually, you know, it's probably about that, right? It's still a great, what's, uh, okay. I don't have to pay it, but I guess. The only problem I have with mine, my, my, we work, I work for the University of Tennessee, we're, we're public servants. My, we don't want to come in and say, you gotta raise taxes every year. That's not our recommendation. But you got two choices. You either increase the revenue source, which in this case your only option, not have profit tanks, or you cut services. State law mandates you have certain services, state laws does not mandate all those services. It's up for this body to figure out what that is. I cannot tell them what services cut. I can't tell them how much to raise taxes. All I can do is, if they ask me, I will answer it. You know, I come in, started August, and it was a scary thought, but thank God the comptrollers weren't saying, give us sixty, six, give that sort of six hundred thousand dollars right now. You're looking at forty-four cent tax increase for this. And that's just to pay that certain thing.
You need to compare actives, actives though, you can't compare Jackson County to other counties.
I didn't do that.
Everybody did, because they found a lot more jobs and stuff.
You're saying that, that we raise ten cents this year, we're out of this thing next year? More likely we're about to raise a sum, yes, sir. I mean, depending on the comptroller's response and the payment plan, um, that, that's possible. A sum increase is gonna be possible, because right now, yes, the economy has a big effect on counties like Jackson and Clay. Even you go, you can go Smith County and see their economy's hurting. Uh, but there's, the cash flow's not there and hey. Well, let me ask you this. If they lose ten cents this year, and they're gonna have to do it again next year, more likely, where are the taxes, wheel tax money? What's it best if maybe we go with it? It's, it's going in the general fund, but it's helping, it's helping the cash flow that hasn't been there the last couple of years. It is recovering what's, what's not been there. And that was a big hit in two thousand eleven, so it's recovering. I mean, like I said, the audited financials in two thousand twelve, and I'm not an auditor, but I worked closely with them, was a deficit. Now, I'm not talking about an unbalanced budget, I'm talking about a deficit in your actual fund reserve for the county. So, that's, that's a note, that's audit, that's audit adjustment, audit funding, but that's adverse opinion actually from all of them. We're not auditing that many services, so let's take, cut some services, let everybody suffer, just want the tax payers to suffer. We can give us lots of tax, and then we got a wheel tax, I ain't gonna dub it, we have three packs, and we can go out here.
What kind of church do you think it could?
I wouldn't say across the job anymore, that's things that we looked at before.
But you create a little thing, you fact, we didn't need all the churches, we've got, you, you make a, you get, you got.
Well, what if we got?
We got an ambulance service, we got a church park, we got, we got, we got.
Frack and now what?
We got trash people, we got.
Life, life wise, it's hard, you know, you know as well as I do. Among the, which thing that losses?
I tell you, we spent a lot of nights here to make, we cut about everything that, uh, I think we cut, and, and now that, all this money you're asking for, not just a mandate, to get time another year.
And we got, how long is a mandate?
I hope not. We, we can't afford to, man, if we could, you know, we could, uh, we'd be a lot better off. I guess we just have to, see what we gotta do.
You know, I feel, you got, like, this is, like, that's the best idea they got for this whole, if I'm in town. And it's saying, well, you got money, because I mean, you have the family.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, I got it.
But we didn't say we weren't here.
Why, I know that, I'm okay with that.
But we had to pass. And the people, the person that made the motion to pay, passed on the vote.
Well, the money, sorry, the money was, is roughly seven, eight thousand dollars, ten of these were used for travel. We take that seven dollars and give it to him. Like I said, they make sixty, seventy thousand dollars a year, he can't pay five hundred, six hundred dollars to us for it, he don't pay a lot.
Whoa, you tomorrow.
I don't think we met chicks that aren't here to be.
I said sixty or seventy, I mean.
Which today is.
It's okay.
Go ahead. Sorry, I don't live down here. A lot of y'all, most y'all won't know, I grew up in the wild, grew up in Bay County. Stayed around there, worked at Osscott's, did everything in the world, I finished a lot of work, a lot of, give up on, join the navy, retired after twenty-five years, moved back home. I done a lot of volunteer work since I come back home. I haven't been paid in there, okay? I tell you, I'm the president of the ID World, also industrial world. Now, where people in here saying stuff about, get some jobs in here, do this, do that. Well, I see, we just wanted you to go over there, and I work with a lot of this stuff. And I tell you, there's a lot of people in this county and in Clay County that are working really hard for all these people, that you don't realize, you don't know about. And I tell you, I had worked on stuff for years, well, I mean, three years, and then one day you walk in, it just goes away. And it's not for county, and it's not for people's lack of trying to do some good, it's a sign of thought on times. It's the country, it's, it's that way everywhere you go. I mean, you know, there's things that's going down that is, that is destroying small town America. The business is not out there. When Osscott's left Bay County, it was devastating. They lost that tax base for three factors at one time in that one county, and almost killed, that was somewhere around a thousand jobs. We're on about, there's less than eight thousand people on the whole county. And you think, and I know, you know, y'all have experienced things like that too, and all I'm getting at is, these people up there making these decisions, I guarantee you, they put a whole lot of thought into this. And, and anybody could come in here and complain, but if you get your butt in that chair and sit down and try to go through all this, one night, and figure out what's going on with that budget, it's not that simple. I grew up, we didn't have an ambulance service. Now, I don't wanna lose it now. I don't think you all believe it. And a lot of things like that, we didn't have trash paper up in the county, people knocking on the riverbank, you know, it's just plain old passion. We don't wanna go back to that kinda stuff. We don't want it up there, I'm sure you don't want it down here. But you all live here, thanks. Counties are joining you, and vice versa. We're all the same boat. And it all works for money, but all I'm saying is, sometimes you got boa, and, and this paper, it starts taking from the backside, you know. Until the economy in this country gets better, it's not gonna get any better in this county, it's not gonna get any better anywhere else. Yes, sir, I understand what you're saying, but I tell you, until you get in there, and you sit down and go through your budget like they have, blame you, but I've, I've done that, and it's tough, you know. And, sorry about that, and I know I come in here, you know, I say, y'all don't know me, and I come in here asking you for money. And bad timing, it, it's always gonna be a bad time. But I'm not asking three hundred thousand dollars, and anything like that, so, uh, you know, just, please keep that in mind, and it all comes back around. Thank you.
Thank you. The only problem I have with that national official was when they said to cut what services, the first two that were ever brought up, the sheriff's department and ambulance service. And then they own the two entities in this county that make money. Why would you cut services? If you tackle vacancies, he's gonna have less people in the jail, less money coming in in this county. Same law and press for Keith over there. What happens when you dial my door in at midnight, and he's as well as if I can find somebody? I'm not gonna be able to handle anybody in this court. And the same with sheriff's department. I don't know about nobody else, I'm coming here ten years ago, so I'm, I'm with other guys, but, um, why can't we just say, i- if we're ten percent behind, twenty percent behind every department or each account, whatever, take that around off, and work within that? That's what I would do, that's what this gentleman would do.
My budget, I'll speak a little bit on mine. My budget this year's budget for seven thousand dollars less than this for last year, drive around eight hundred thousand dollars. That's, that's pretty close to that. The jail budget is real close to that, I think it was actually just a little bit more. But like I said, the more, the more, the more we've, well, two, three years ago, the jail brought in about four hundred thousand dollars. With a thirty thousand dollar investment, actually we brought in even more. Um, the sheriff's department is, is kinda working on the ten percent thing, pretty close to it, but the jail's actually, like I said, do the way, uh, we've learned about a lot of more, and pretty much all of them increases with the way, more people, more, more classes associated with those things.
Well, we got, we got two more guards on the county, a number of prisoners, two people, make it legal for today.
I, I understand that your department brings in a whole lot of money, but I'm, I think we're, we're really starting down slippery slope, if we start looking at our law enforcement as revenue generating.
I agree.
You know, that's, that's, that's crazy. What are we doing?
I agree.
We've, we've got fucking people in jail, so we have enough money, we're in the county. We don't have to, that's ridiculous. Those in jail, they do something wrong, they might, might find out about them.
Right, well, most of our, most of our revenue generating in-laid are, has been since the families in other counties are part of the, 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 the counties. But I agree, like, when you, Tom Lortop, you gotta look at in-laid revenue for a.
It's scary for society, I think, that's, that's, very scary.
Well, that is, that is true, but what I'm saying, though, even though he's working at the budget he's working at, and you go talking about cutting jobs, and you start cutting jobs, corrections, all that, Debbie, you start cutting, oh, your services are gonna go down. He's not gonna have the manpower to do what he's doing now.
But if we can't pay for it, we can't pay for it. No matter what the business is, right? If we can't pay it, we can't pay it. That's, I'm, well, whatever we want, we gotta have the money for it.
I would say, I would say, we're, we're trying another round, we'll get out of, we're trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to, we're trying to. But I want, I want people to know that I tried to get, we all tried to get, we made it.
Well, we worked every night, fourteen, that was the job. We worked fourteen nights, and if we won't take another vote, that's fine.
And there's no way for us to trim.
No, we trim as much as we can. We cut everybody, we cut every person in here, but.
None of what we need, change.
And y'all think it's fat, probably, the.
That's, that's not what I'm saying, honestly. I mean, we know they're not fat, but. Now, personally, I went for commissioner, for commissioner for two years ago, so I'm a Greenhorn, like a lot of, these eight or nine, and, uh, I went for commissioner, for commissioner, because I was part of my taxes growing up, and I was gonna turn this county around. And then I became commissioner, and John Stinkbit put me on budget committee, and I'm not sure that's a good thing. Uh, but then you find out that you ain't gonna turn this county around. Y'all who live in a great county, I, I don't know, is, why do you live here? I mean, I'd have to ask you, why do you live in this county?
I think it's the best place to live.
That's what I thought. I'm, I'm, I'm forty-eight years old, I've never lived eighty miles from Jamesboro, Tennessee. My address has always been Jamesboro, Tennessee. I've worked in Public County for twenty-some years. If I wanna live in Public County, I'd live in Public County, like being in Boston. I don't wanna live in Public County. I live in the greatest county in the United States of America. That's my personal opinion, I think it's beautiful. I love coming home, but guys, there's a price to pay to live in this county. And our taxes, somebody said, don't compare it to Public County, and you're right, but the point that somebody was trying to make is, uh, our taxes in comparison, we don't pay a lot if you live around, and I hate it, but there's this, if we're gonna continue to run the county, if Doug's gonna, you know, and, I mean, we don't get near what his school budget is, we just put just a little in it, but still, yeah, what we put in the tanks, pays for some of what he does. Same way with the, uh, votes, and the free, same way with all the county, everything we do here is our money. I mean, it, and beer taxes down twenty-some thousand dollars, that meant we sold less beer than county last year. Well, I'm good, I'm good with that, everybody else not my bait, but I personally am okay with that. Well, there's a price to pay when beer sales is down. I'm gonna get that revenue somewhere, right?
Pretty sure it forgets.
That might be it.
Good job, Brandon.
I, I'm just saying, you, you, you know, it's easy to vote enough, but I'm telling you, we ain't got no choice, and y'all have what you want to. I'm not going to will it, and I ain't.
I don't go, you need to will it.
You get to have a reason for it, we don't have to, when they come in and set your tax rate at three dollars and fifty cents plus, maybe three A. Being, I don't think you'll make that too far off, three A.
Now, wait a minute. You have the state one, I don't know. You'll get about a twenty-four cent.
They'll, they'll probably make it all forty-four cents. I don't believe that, I don't believe that at all.
Let me ask you, who's fault is it that they'd like to do ambulance service, and I know it's not keep, they, but whose fault was it not keep up with all of this? Cause then immediately, nobody knows.
I'm not the person answering that, I don't.
I mean, somebody should've been watching up.
Correct, every time you turn around, here's the correct, here's the correct.
And what's that actually with?
He's one of the charges up.
Okay, but does he not have a committee he has to take it to and show them? So that committee is responsible just as well?
I'll speak through it, because I share that committee. We have an employee that was not filed on paper, and we're pretty on the bottom line.
Okay, you know what, and I know that for a fact, because I have called and called and called and called to get her. But what do you do when you go to your ambulance director and you tell him, hey, this needs to be paid, they're not standing?
Everybody has been removed.
Okay.
We are, we, we, we found out, people were fired, people.
But why did it take so long? It's just didn't happen overnight? And it didn't just happen in a year's time?
We were not fed and correct information.
Do y'all not see the money?
We're not told, especially.
I mean, did y'all not see?
No, we don't see the money, no. We see the numbers that are reported.
So in other words, y'all don't believe they take off the lead?
You know, and they don't show up, because all it takes them this year, I mean, when they were caught, it was.
So you're saying this happened in a one-year period?
Sorry?
Happened in a one-year period?
Uh, most of it did, yes. You said the votes were cooked? I didn't say that, I said the numbers did not match up with what was correct. I mean, most, no, no, the, the insurance was not found.
That's scary for our society, I think, that's, that's crazy scary.
Well, that is, that is true, but what I'm saying, though, even though he's working at the budget he's working at, and you go talking about cutting. Jobs, and you start cutting jobs, corrections officers, deputies, you start cutting those, your services are gonna go down. He's not gonna have the manpower to do what he's doing now.
But if we can't pay for it, we can't pay for it. No matter what the business is right, if we can't pay it, we can't pay it. Well, whatever we want, we gotta have the money for it. Staples for me, I mean, we'll, we'll try another round. We'll get out of some state company, let state company, and I can be a state man. But I want, I want people to know that I tried to get a budget. We all tried to get a budget, I'm sure, and they did.
Well, we were, every night fourteen that we stood on.
Yeah.
We were fourteen nights, and if you wanna take another vote, that's fine.
And there's nowhere else to trim them.
No, we trim as much as we can, we cut everybody, we cut every person in your budget.
None of what we need. And y'all think there's a path to public? That's, that's not what I'm saying. I mean, we know there's not a path to being. And I personally went commissioner, for commissioner for two years together, so I'm a Greenhorn, like a lot of, these eight or nine. And I ran commissioner, commissioner, because I started my taxes going up, I was gonna turn this county around. And then I became commissioner in. Johnson, Bigfoot, and Old West Committee, and I'm not sure that's a good thing. But then you find out that she ain't gonna turn this county around. Y'all who live in a great county. Now, I, I don't know, why do you live here? I, I'd have to ask you, why do you live in this county?
Y'all do the best place to live.
That's what I thought, I'm, I'm, I'm forty eight years old, I've lived, lived eighty miles from Jamesboro, Tennessee. My address has always been Jamesboro, Tennessee. I've worked in Public County for twenty some years. If I wanna live in Public County, I live in Public County, like being in Rocky. I don't wanna live in Public County. I live in the greatest county in the United States of America. That's my personal opinion, I think it's beautiful. I love coming home, but guys ain't surprised to pay to live in this county. And our taxes, somebody said, don't compare it to Public County, and you're right. But the point that somebody tried to make is, uh. Our taxes in comparison, we don't pay a lot. If you look around, and I hate that there's this, if we're gonna continue to run the county. It does, you know, and, I mean, we don't get near what this school budget is. We just put this on living. But still, yeah, what we put into tanks pays for some of what he does, same way with the soup, uh, votes and the preaching. Same way with all the county, everything we do here is our money, I mean, it, and beer taxes down twenty some thousand dollars, that meant we sold less beer than county last year. Well, I'm good, I'm good with that. Everybody else got my faith, but I personally am okay with that. Well, there's a price to pay when beer sales is down. I can go get that revenue somewhere, right? And. That's my deal.
Good job, Brad.
I, I'm just saying, you, you, you know, it's easy to vote no. I'm telling you, we ain't got no choice, and y'all have what you want, but I'm not going to will it, Diane. You didn't have a reason for it, we don't have to, when they come in and set the cap for a tax rate of three dollars and fifty cents plus, maybe three eighty. Being, I don't think you'll make out too far off of three eighty. Uh. Now, wait a minute. You have the state one then?
You'll get about twenty four cents.
I don't, I don't believe that, I don't believe that.
Let me ask you this, whose fault is it that they'd like to do ambulance service, and I know it's not keep, they, but whose fault was it not keep up with all this? Cause evidently, nobody knows.
I'm not the person to answer that, I don't.
I mean, somebody should've been watching up.
Correct, every time you turn around, there's a correct, there's a correct.
And what's that actually with?
He's one of the charges up.
Okay, but does he not have a committee he has to take it to and show them? So that committee is responsible just as well?
I'll speak for you, because I chair that committee. We have an employee that was not filed in Plank County, pretty on the bottom line.
Okay, you know what, and I know that for a fact, because I have called and called and called and called to get her. But what do you do when you go to her ambulance director and you tell him, hey, this needs to be paid, they're not paying it?
Everybody has been removed.
Okay.
We are, we, we, we found out. People were retired, people.
But why did it take so long, it's just it happened overnight? It didn't just happen in a year's time?
We were not fed and corrected permission.
Do y'all not see the money? I mean, did y'all not see?
No, we don't see the money, no, we see the numbers that are reported.
So in other words, y'all don't believe they take off?
You know, and they don't show up until all they came to them this year. I mean, when they were called, it was.
So you're saying it just happened in a one year period?
Sorry?
Happened in a one year period?
Uh. Most of it, yeah. Are you saying the votes were cooked? So I didn't say that, I said the numbers did not match up with what was correct. I mean, not, no, the, the. Insurance was not found. Kind of man, I tell you what I did.
But wasn't y'all informed of this situation?
Uh.
But wasn't y'all informed of this situation? Not just there on end, y'all were told that this ain't been done? Had y'all been told of?
Not, not by previous record, we were, we were the director for Pete. And it was not, you know, making a call. And we didn't know the numbers until Pete got in there and we actually started digging. And finding out. I hear most will reconsider that vote. Motion of Billy Meyer to reconsider the vote. Another second. Motion Billy Meyer, second of Randy Hady. All roll. Yes.
Randy Hady.
Yep.
Jackson.
Uh.
Bruce Hall. Diane Martin.
Yes.
Shane Lee.
Yeah.
Dawn Allen.
Yes.
Larry Fox. Will McRae.
Uh.
Alvin Go. Brian Hane. Brian Moore.
Uh.
Paul Hill.
I'm obvious, I don't suppose.
Smith and Gill. Buddy Brown.
I think that he has to be with the council, so I don't know.
Billy Martin.
Yes.
Where is he?
No. Seventeen. Thank you, Jim. Motion carried. Seventeen. Okay, and you, and your appropriations resolution. You got two resolutions besides. The first one, the tax levy. The first, let's go back to page two on you. That's a resolution for appropriations. On page two there. Resolution appropriate. Okay. That's all ready. Bonds got their own, for the amount of their dollars. Lead one, they're general bond. Solid white, dirt bond, highway, pardon, inter purpose two, then on that there. Motion of Barry Allen. Second of Joe Jensen. All roll. Motion carried on that, now roll for page. Seven, that's for your tax levy. That's all that we voted on this week, so we gotta vote on again for sending the Tom Rogers. Take a seven. List all of them. Not all together. Let me vote on that go. Then motion. Billy Meyer. Second of Scott Allen. All roll.
All right. Randy Hady.
Yeah.
Jackson.
Uh.
Bruce Hall. Diane Martin. Shane. Dawn Allen.
Yes.
Larry Fox. Billy Brown. Paul Hill. Brian Hane. Brian Moore. Martin. Ricky Hade. Buddy Brown. Billy Martin.
Ten to seven. And those two resolutions, that's all we got, I mean, we supposed to read them. So we have from that other, yeah. One is sure, or not one is pity giving. First one is the, one of the booms of. Investment income, what, learning to talk to people about from.
Uh, these two resolutions, audit, uh, ten from county audit, I think worked up in the county, just to show you where the money's been adjusted from, uh, the credit board, debt service, the general fund. Uh, what was been overpaid to debt service, and then the next one. The interest that was earned, uh, investment income, it should've been at general funds to go to debt service, that's all these two are. Just the resolutions to improve that, I mean, that's, it's, it's issued by August, I wish I told you.
He said, have that tax, that's what. Motion of Dex Mayo. Second. Motion of Dex Mayo, second of Will Mary. You don't do, you don't do both of them together?
Yeah.
Yeah, we both do together. All roll.
All right. Randy Hady. Jackson.
Uh.
Bruce Hall. Diane Martin. Shane.
Yes.
Dawn Allen.
Yes.
Larry Fox. Will McRae. Paul Hill. Brian Hane. Brian Moore. Paul Hill.
Yes. Six fingers. Get over. I don't have to worry about more baby, I'm trying to put up with my mom. So I have to work for, for all of them. The only guy that's standing there. He needs to make certain vote open, not in the same room, definitely.
What's that, what's that one doing?
What?
But if, if you send it back in. Whatever that, that totally creates that time.
Well, if you fill your budget up now, you're figuring out the line, if you're doing away with it, it's the same amount of money, but it just didn't, instead of two miles, it's more miles. You know.
Next year, next year, she tells that, tells that, put more money in there, like that.
Yeah, and I think you got my word, please, make it a little longer, that might get us a six.
How much would that cost if anyone told you that might increase that?
And I mean, y'all, if next year we save this place, we'll go less, it's more, that'll be, y'all decide to. It's more, I don't say, if, and y'all. I'm, I'm, all the way to that, that, I'll keep those through that thirty six, twenty eight percent, get my word. What is the language? Motion of Bruce Hall, and a second of Shane Lee.
With the bottom one to the left.
I'm gonna finish the. Make no more.
All right.
Yeah.
Randy Hady.
Yes.
Jackson.
Uh.
Bruce Hall. Diane Martin.
Yes.
Shane.
Yes.
Paul Hill.
Yes.
Larry Fox. Will McRae. Paul Hill.
Yes.
Brian Hane. Brian Moore. All Hill.
Yes.
Ricky Hade. Buddy Brown. Billy Martin. Shane.
Yes. Not review. Paul M. Lovett. Sharon Taylor. Philip Intry. Diana Martin. Lisa Sullivan. Patrick Martin. Six no reviews. Motion of Willard. Second of Billy White.
All right. Randy Hady.
Yeah.
Jackson.
Uh.
Bruce Hall. Diane Martin. Yep. No, I'm supposed to go down the line here. Shane Lee.
Yes.
Paul Hill.
Yes.
Larry Fox. Will McRae. Paul Hill. Brian Hane. Brian Moore.
Yes.
Paul Hill.
Yes.
Ricky Hade. Buddy Brown. Billy Martin.
Yeah. Oh. Yes, motion carried. Anybody else have anything to come full court? Randy Hady, second of Shane Lee.